Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. At this time, council members, if you would please stand, first of all, for a moment of silence followed by an invocation that will be given by Dr. Hal Hostler from Calvary Baptist Church, the new pastor and a dear friend of the mayor. And then please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Doc, it's with great sadness that we mentioned to the Portsmouth family that on yesterday we lost a dear member of our team. Wendy Ford was a senior deputy clerk here in our office and a very professional and caring young lady. She was 42 years old. She was responsible for doing all of my proclamations and letters out to the public. She -- you told me not to do this. Would you please pray for our dear friend? Thank you, Doc.
Our Father, we remember this lovely lady, and we remember her family and all of those who love her, remember her. We pray for your blessing, for your peace, for your joy in their midst in the spite of this sad, sad event. May you be glorified in it all still. And, Lord, we do, this day, praise you in every way that we know how to do that. We thank you for your mercy, for your forgiveness. We thank you that, as your people, we can come before you and ask you for things. We thank you for the freedom that we have here to be able to do a thing like this. We remember that those first permanent settlers, when they came off of the Atlantic and turned there at Cape Henry, the first thing they did was come to these shores and pray. And we thank you that we, working here, can be your servants for good. We who love our city, this town of Portsmouth, we pray your blessing as we share respect one for another, as we represent our peoples from around the city, that we might do your will with joy and love toward one another. In these deliberations, we look to you for your guidance and thought. In the ending all this, Lord, after we've done everything we know to do, we leave things in your hands and yield these things to you. Now, Lord, here in this hall, there may be different people that know you in different ways. Some may even call you by a different name. But collectively, we thank you and praise you, and I thank you in the name of my Lord, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, if you would please indicate your presence electronically. Madam Clerk?
Seven members of the City Council are present.
Members of the City Council, thank you, Doc. I really appreciate that. I had a Wilson Craddock joke, but this isn't the time. We beat you anyway, but he's a Craddock man.
Not all the time.
Not all the time, okay. Members of the City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of March 3, 2015, a regular meeting of March 3, 2015, and a call meeting of March 10, 2015, and a regular meeting of March 10, 2015. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption. Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel -- excuse me.
City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your remarks at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum. It should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her remarks. Unfinished business, 15-66, rezoning, item B. Ordinance granting the request of George F. Moody to rezone Point Zero -- excuse me, Point 304 acres located at 3433 and 3435 Portsmouth Boulevard from general mixed use to urban residential in order to construct two single-family residences. See 15-01, first reading vote, seven zero, approved. Vision principle of robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and we have no registered speakers.
Move for approval. Second.
Counsel, we have a motion -- excuse me, we have a motion and a second. Please adopt this item electronically. This item has been adopted, seven zero. City manager's report, 15-126. Adoption of ordinance appropriating the sum of $98,273 in the FY 2014-15 Asset Forager Fund for the use by the Portsmouth Police Department. Vision principle, efficient responsive government, electronic roll call, and we have no registered speakers.
Motion for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. This item has been adopted, seven zero. 15-127. Adoption of ordinance to appropriate $40,325,841 by the classification to the FY 2014-15 operating budget for the Portsmouth Public School System to implement the fourth quarter of the approval operating budget to appropriate $629,546 in additional funding for education and to transfer funds between classifications. Vision principle, efficient responsive government, electronic roll call, and we have a registered
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. I have no objection to council appropriating $40 million to the schools. In fact, I think you all should be appropriating more if you were doing due diligence and you were adequately funding public education. The reason I rise to speak is that I believe breaking this into quarterly installments on their allowance is unwarranted. I agree with Councilmember Whitaker's points about how, if the goal of this is to improve communication between the two bodies, there are other ways to achieve it without encumbering their finances. And so I would ask that, as you go into the new budget season, you revisit this policy and rescind it, return to annual allocation, as has been the process for all but this fiscal year, at least insofar as my experience goes. When I moved here in 1996, and every year until the last fiscal year, you were allocating it as a lump sum. If you want more frequent conversations, if you want more frequent financial reports, well and good. The grand jury did take both bodies to task about the way you were handling funds. You collectively were handling funds. And so more conversation is good. It would be nice, as I attend the school board meetings, to see your liaisons present. I've gone to several meetings since you did your school board -- since you did your liaison appointments at the beginning of the year, and I've never seen either of them there. That's one way to improve communication. When I go to the EDA and PPIC, I do see council members or a council member there on a religious attendance level. So surely make use of your liaisons, but communicate with each other, and stop acting like the father figure dealing with an unruly child. The school board has its responsibilities. The school board has a financial accounting system that would produce reports that should be satisfactory in terms of accounting for the money they receive. This particular form of allocation is unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 15-128. Adoption of an ordinance establishing a personal property tax relief percentage of 53% for calendar year 2015, personal property tax bills, vision principle, efficient responsive government, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for adoption. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 15-129. Adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 6 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Section 6-7 thereof pertaining to the promulgation of rules and regulations for the operation of city-owned and city-operated piers, wharfs, docks, landings, and other water-dependent facilities. Vision principle, quality of life, electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move for adoption. Second.
I have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 15-130. Adoption of an ordinance appropriating $458,872 in the FY 2014-15 Capital Improvement Fund to update two museum facilities in order to comply with Federal Americans with Disabilities Act requirements. Vision principle, quality of life, and lifelong learning community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, just a question on this for Mr. Rowe. The money that's being allocated here under this request, the request from the Portsmouth Community Colored Library Museum for the additional equipment that was needed, I think it was a scanner, copier. If we're allocating this amount for some of the rehab work that needs to be done under the Americas with Disabilities Act, can we make sure that that's taken care of?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 15-131. Adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to vacate and release the City of Portsmouth's interest in 104 parking spaces in the Proctor Square Parking Lot, 711 King Street. Vision principle, robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have a registered speaker, Mr. Mark Godalde Yutrowski.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. Mayor Wright, I remember Mayor Holly sitting up there in your position, not necessarily at that location, but as mayor, and talking about how Portsmouth needs to stop selling itself short. And I heard him in the other room talking about how we're not getting enough for the property that we sell in this city. And it seems to me that this particular item is another instance in that long, sad history. So we are going to give away our interest in 104 parking places because somebody will come to town and pay taxes? And just how much in taxes are they going to pay? I didn't see anything of that nature in the executive discussion of this item. But I have heard people over the years that I've lived here come up to this microphone and complain about the impact on their businesses of not having enough parking in downtown. So to me, this is counterproductive, counterintuitive, and counter to good sense. If there is somebody interested in this property, and the sticking point is those 104 spaces that are allocated for public parking, then let them put up something for it. You are giving away what is a public benefit. So there should be compensation to allow for the replacement of those 104 spaces in some other location. But I think this is another case of us selling ourselves short because we don't believe in ourselves, because we don't believe that we can attract business here without giving away public property. I mean, look at the Sports Hall of Fame. We gave them the land on which it sits, and that, to me, would have been sufficient contribution to it, but it doesn't end. Then we gave them $4 million toward the cost of construction, and we give them $500,000 a year in operating subsidies. It goes on and on. We sell ourselves short. So I'm opposed to this, and I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Mr. Rowe, could you elaborate on this issue?
Yes, sir. Let me take everyone to the intersection of High and Effingham, and I'll use the old Bloomberg's department store building. Back in the mid-2000s, around 2004 or '05, there were two developers who were developing that intersection on the southeast corner of that intersection into apartments, the old Bloomberg's building, which then had become Allen Furniture. And they were moving east on High Street and actually did Montgomery Grill, the restaurant, and then did the Palm Shop. They approached the city back in the mid-2000s about the city conveying this property to them, and they were going to build a parking garage to support the multifamily apartments that they were putting in those old urban buildings. A parking garage, even at that time, was about anywhere from $15,000 to $24,000 per space to build. So apparently, the city conveyed the property to them. The recession comes, they end up getting out of the development project. The project is taken over by the Virginia Department of Housing, VHDA. And so the city doesn't own this property at all. So it's not in city ownership at this particular moment. That ownership stopped when the city conveyed it to the two developers, and then when their interest was foreclosed on and taken over by VHDA, VHDA now owns it. VHDA has another developer who's willing to come in and finish out the build-out of those apartments so that we have additional apartments and people living downtown. The city did keep an interest that we could come in and build a parking garage. Well, parking garages are expensive. Again, it's the average price per space is anywhere from $15,000 to $24,000. And if we do any building of parking garages, we ought to be looking at the ones that we have that are in really bad shape, like County Street. We've got some real issues with County Street. Also, when the city adopted its new zoning ordinance, it did away with a requirement for off-street parking for this type of development. So what we're being asked to do is give up our interest, which was, at some point in the future, we could come in and build a parking garage there. You don't have a need for it. It's not in city ownership. If you were looking to build a parking garage, that's not where the parking garage is needed. We need to replace the ones that we have that are in really bad shape. Does this make sense?
So this, the spaces are for the apartment complex?
Yes, sir.
Public parking?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Micks?
Hey, John, will you -- the VA came in and asked for rezoning for 65 or 60 apartments to finish up?
That's correct. Chuck, do you know the exact number? Can you come up? And again while he comes, this is taking an old building in downtown that's being adaptively reused for urban housing.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, everybody, council members, thank you. Yes, this is 67 apartments that are pretty much occupied. The parking lot has been used for that purpose. The HDA does own, through foreclosure, on the original developer of Montgomery Square Apartments. So they are protecting through the new lender requirement for ensuring that there is parking that will exist for that particular development, and more importantly, to us, in the redevelopment of that strategic corner, the lower level where you have retail that's currently 30,000 feet empty. The original developer had to count on the rental income from that development to really make his numbers work. It didn't. What we have with the new buyer of the building, removing this restriction that we had the ability to come in and build a parking deck on top of the property in question, is that they don't have to rely as heavily on their retail number so they can make an aggressive deal to re-energize that corner for us while at the same time giving them about 100 parking spaces. They are going to make improvements to the parking lot itself, securing it, making some landscaping improvements and other things, but it assures their success and gives us a much better chance of energizing that corner sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. The fact that we didn't control that property after the developer or the business went delinquent tells me we didn't have a revert clause in it. So I hope all of our partner agencies know that when they do an agreement that where we, especially where we're going to convey property, that that agreement says if that development doesn't come to fruition, that property comes back to the city. And I don't know if this particular project predated that because we've been burnt on that a few times since I've been on council. And hopefully, this happened before the fact because I thought a revert clause was the way that we were going to go to market.
It was before.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Members of council, we have a motion. We're in need of a second. We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. New business, 15-132, boards and commissions. Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, Deborah. I would like to do what I do at every meeting, but with a little more specificity. We always ask for people to volunteer to serve on our boards and commissions. But I want to reiterate that applications are updated every two years. So if you applied more than two years ago, please reapply because situations change. Your expertise may have changed. What we need your service for has changed. I particularly encourage you to apply if you are female. We try very hard to balance these boards and commissions by where folks live, by their age, by their color of their skin, and whether they're male or female. And we don't get enough female applications, quite frankly. So I really encourage you, go online, look at portsmouthva.gov, and see what is available, and you can apply online, which gets your application to us that much quicker. Right, I'm going to make some suggestions for appointments tonight, but I can tell you right now, we have a need for folks on the Board of Building Code and Appeals. We have two spots open on the History Commission, the Library Board, the Parking Authority, and the Wetlands Board, which is very specific in that if you sit on the Wetlands Board, by state law, you may not serve on any other board or commission appointment in the city. And that's a state law. That's not a city law. So tonight, I would recommend the following appointments to my colleagues. To the Community Criminal Justice Board, Tracy Link. To the Downtown Design To the Downtown Design Committee, DeAndre Barnes, Rebecca Laras, and Vernon Tillage. To the History Commission, John Robbins, Jr., Kimberly Wimbish, and Margaret Windly. To the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Ursula Murphy. To the Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Tanya Street. To the Parks and Recreation Commission, Wilbert Allen. To the Supplemental Retirement Board, Annette Ellen Santos and Gary Waters. To the Tidewater Community College Board, Linda Breidenhour.
Did you do the retirement board? I have one. All right.
Members of council, you have that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0 with one abstention.
Okay. Thank you.
15-133, items submitted by council members.
Thank you. Let me, first of all, I want to congratulate the IC Norcom Greyhound basketball, boys' basketball team. They won a state championship. I think this is their fourth one in six years, and I want to really congratulate each and every one of those young people, the cheerleaders, the school, the whole nine yards. It was well-represented up in Richmond. Myself and Vice Mayor Simmons went up, and it was, it was quite an event, and hopefully by next meeting, I apologize, I wanted to have them here tonight, but we've, we've had a lot of stuff going on. But again, I want to congratulate them and, and Coach Guzbi. I think Coach Guzbi has been here through all of that. He's built that program and worked with those young people and has done quite a bit to put our city on the map when it comes to boys' basketball at IC Norcom. And he deserves not only a huge round of applause, but if he stays here with our city, I hope our school system is smart enough to do what's right when it comes to coaches and developing young student athletes like that, and he really has his heart in it. So I want to finish what I was reading here about our senior deputy clerk because I try to finish everything I do, and I apologize, but Wendy worked for us for five years. She came here in 2010, and she did all of the mayor's proclamations and letters. She was a proud wife and mother of three children, and she was a member of the Virginia Meniscus Clerk Association and the institutional, international institution of meniscus clerks. And her long-term professional goal was to become a city clerk, and she's sorely going to be missed, and we won't let her family know how much we're going to miss her here. And I want to applaud not only Ms. White and her staff, but everyone here on the team that has worked with her and her family throughout this ordeal, and it's tough. With that, Dr. Whitaker? Yes, um, this is, this question is for Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson, we received a memo from Mr. Rowe in regards to the disparity study, an update that was requested, and I just needed some clarity. There was language in the memo indicating that the city attorney's office has already reviewed documents and has established the legal framework for any and all decisions made by the city. And I need to find out, how is it that a legal framework has been developed already for the MWBE program when the disparity study has not been issued?
Dr. Whitaker, we're, we're going to be probably following the, the lead of the school board on, on the procedures that they took, and that's, that's the extent to which, which a framework has been established. Ms. Cordell in our office is the primary person dealing with, with the disparity study, but there, there have been no, nothing in stone has been done, has been, has been done. So we're, we're still, you know, this is still a, a work in progress as far as the city's concerned. There's been, we don't have the disparity study back yet, nor do we have the recommendations, and we will, they'll be addressed accordingly.
Okay, so, right, so that legal framework that was established, that was, that was done through outside counsel for the MWBE program?
I have not, we have not engaged outside counsel for the city's disparity study project.
Right. No, I was just saying, you were saying you were following the lead of the school board. The school board used outside counsel to develop that legal framework.
Yes, sir. Generally, that, that's what we'll do, and that's what the school board did do.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Anybody else?
Yeah, the second.
Yes, sir.
Second issue, Mr. Rowe, could, in preparation for our budget discussions, we, could we get a report on the city departments that are renting space from private entities? Where we have city departments renting from private entities?
Right. I'll get that. We've done that before, and we'll refresh it.
Yeah.
And, and send it out to you.
So we get the, who the, who the owner is, the rent amount?
Right. The terms of the lease and et cetera.
Right.
Gotcha.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Is that it, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 15-134, report on pending items, and we have none this evening. 15-135, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Ned McKay.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, honorable council members, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Rowe, and all city people here collected and people at home also. For those of you that know me, know I usually have a cause, and for the last couple of years, my cause has been the Ida Barber Early Learning Center. And we're gearing up in the middle of April to celebrate the Week of the Young Child. And in doing so, we are going to have the first annual walk-athon for the children, and we're going to have it at IC Norcom, which I just want to take a second to say, we forgot the boys' track team also won a state championship.
That's exactly right.
So I got yelled at for forgetting them today at, at Norcom's office. But anyway, what we'd like to do is have as many people come out and walk for the children, and we've invited five other childcare centers to join us, and we just want to walk to raise money for those childcare centers so that we can continue to get children ready to come to kindergarten, because the more ready the children are, the less money it ends up costing us, and the better students they are in the long run. So the way it works is we're going to walk, there's a $25 registration fee, and it's $10 for children 12 and younger. But you just come out, walk, we'll have refreshments, prizes, music, trophies for the people that walk the most laps, et cetera. And that is going to be on Saturday, April 18th, from 9:00 to noon at IC Norcom High School. And if you do want to register, I'm going to leave these at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk. I've got some flyers and I have some registration forms. But if you do want to register, just call the center and we'll get you anything that you need. And that's Ida Barber Early Learning Center. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ned. Thanks for what you're doing for those kids.
Honorable Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, City Council members, City Manager Rowe, City Attorney Wilson, Deborah White and her staff. I do share your loss also, Deborah. My name is Joseph R. Wright. I live at 1451, excuse me, Welcome Road in the city of Portsmouth. Cavalier Manor Neighborhood Watch celebrated its 33rd year with a dinner at Edmonds Center last Friday night. The highlights, the dinner was well-attended. The Commonwealth's Attorney brought all, nearly all of her prosecutors and staff in her office. Also, our partners in public safety were well-represented, namely Police Chief Ed Hoges and a number of police officers and staff. The Sheriff's Office with Captain Lee Cherry explaining that Sheriff Bill Watson was recuperating from an injury, and they were well-represented. Fire Chief Beck Barfield, three assistant fire chiefs, and other staff from his department were present. Also represented were the Commissioner of the Revenue's Office, City Treasurer's Office, and a number of school board members. These are the lowlights. We were certainly pleased that Mayor Ken Wright and Vice Mayor Lizbeth Simmons were in attendance. But some of us felt there should have been more council members present to help celebrate the city's oldest continuous neighborhood watch organization. We felt that since we were recognized by United States Senator Mark Warner by letter and Congressman Bobby Scott coming in to attend from Washington to help us celebrate, more members of our own city council should have been there. Of course, Councilman Cherry notified us in advance. He was called out of town, and Councilman Moody has attended quite a few of our dinners in the past. The other council members were no-shows and no-words. Now, on another matter, some of our citizens citywide feel that a faction of this council does not represent all of our citizens, myself included. I feel that is a move to separate the citizens by race in Portsmouth like we were years ago. I can see the Portsmouth family breaking up again. I know Dr. Holly wouldn't like that if he were here today. Ms. Deborah White, you are not just a clerk, and you are certainly not, not a dictator. I feel that you are a dedicated city employee who loves your job and your city. Please, please, don't let anybody force you into early retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. ... Councilman Mix, could we please dispense with the applause? You know that's not allowed in here. Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Wright. I was in the Bahamas on a vacation. That's, I just, I don't want you to think I was at home while I missed your, your thing. I apologize for missing it.
Madam Clerk?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Ms. Porter.
I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. I'm just going to get right to it. My name is Megan Porter, as you know, and I'm here first as a mother of an autistic child, an advocate, and a resident of Portsmouth. My agenda for this evening is to spread awareness of autism and the need for more resources for the autistic community of Portsmouth. You know, autism is a communication and social disorder, and Portsmouth, I got from Judith Fagan that there are about 125 students classified with autism, and there are more children that haven't been diagnosed that's currently under development display. But there are literally no extracurricular activities besides school for the autistic community of Portsmouth. It's highly frustrating that any extra activities, I want to enroll my son in as far as, you know, swimming lessons to help simulate him, and just any other normal activities, I want my son to participate, like in sports, and just music therapy, therapy, and speech pathology. We have to cross the water. It's, everything is either in Virginia Beach or in the Great Bridge area of Chesapeake. Just for like, for instance, I'm always getting, you know, notifications about like different activities, but it's always in Virginia Beach. Virginia Beach area, they have their bowling alleys, their bounce houses, always come together and do something for the autistic, their autistic residents. So I feel like the city of Portsmouth, we need to step up as a community and come together and, you know, for our autistic community because there are residents of this area Also, overall, I would like to, do, I would like to organize a walk. April is Autism Awareness Month, and I just want to do a walk this year, not just to raise, not to raise money, just the purpose of this, um, just spreading awareness about what autism is and to show, you know, our autistic residents in Portsmouth is who are, who we are, our families, and just like, and just have like, you know, the exposure of other businesses and people who wants to do things, like, okay, Portsmouth is a city too. They don't have anything, literally. So if I want to, you know, have this business, okay, let me just do it in Portsmouth, you know, to help autistic instead of everybody just rushing to Virginia Beach. Just, I already know that, you know, exposure will help. I just mentioned it, you know, on Facebook and a few friends, and I have a person, Javon Bradshaw, he has a local sports organization called We Are 757, and he wants to step up and help also, you know, just trying to do like autistic-friendly sports activities and things like that. If you see, I gave, we have passed out earlier a flyer about, it's called, the poem is called "The Autistic Awareness Ribbon," and on the last line, it says that, "Hope that through increased awareness of autism and through early innovation and appropriate treatments, people with autism will lead fuller and more complete lives." And as a mother, and I can speak for literally all parents because I am one, that's all I want for my son. I want him to live a fully, complete life. He's highly functional. I want him to play sports. I want to help with his social awkwardness and things like that, and I want to help build up his motor skills and communication. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Porter, and maybe we'll have someone contact you. I think we probably can, there are some things that are going on. I actually spoke over at Mervview Hospital last year at a graduation, and some of the program and resources that were directed there with workforce development and students at the high school level, and then going on to self-sufficiency and all. But how old is your child, if you don't mind?
My son is seven years old.
Seven years old.
And he attends Lakeview Elementary. His teacher's here, Ms. Pierce. If it wasn't for her going beyond, beyond.
I understand. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Simmons?
Thank you, sir. I was just going to say, I know our ombudsman always brings us back a report on answers to, to citizens' questions at the next meeting. But I have to tell you, in, in more than 10 years sitting here, I've never heard anybody ask a question about it, and I'm curious myself. I'm sure we do do some things, but I don't know what they are, and particularly for the benefit of those other 100 children's families, I look forward to Ms. Hogg's report, you know, for the, for the public's benefit, too.
Yes, thank you. And actually, just purchased a book called Disconnected Kids. If y'all need a reference to learn more about what, you know, extracurricular activity does for like autistic people and things like that, then y'all can refer to this. And I think that's pretty much all I had to say.
Yeah, you're doing a great job. And if I remember, I think two of the kids were graduates of IC Norcom, and the one young man, I think, was featured in the newspaper last year with something that he was doing there. But Dr. Edmonds?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Porter, that was wonderful. Perhaps in the development of our pines, where the pines was, that maybe there might be an opportunity that we could use that also to help those types of situations.
Good, good. Mr. Rowe?
Yes, sir. That's being clairvoyant, sir. I was thinking the same thing, and I was going to say, Anita Minzia-Joseph will meet you. She's one of our deputy city managers, and when you sit down, if you don't mind talking with her so we can help, we want to help.
Great, thank you.
And our director just nodded that we do have programs, yes, and you can see her as well.
And if you could help, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great job.
Mr. Roderick Madison.
And as you're taking your mic, did the teacher come to support her, or you just here on another matter, teacher?
Oh, no, I'm here to support her.
Okay, thank you. Bless your heart. Bless your heart. Lakeview Rocks, right?
Oh, yes.
Yes, ma'am, that's right. Mr. Madison, how you doing, sir?
Good evening. I'm Roderick Madison. I'm here representing the Friends of Portsmouth Juvenile Courts. And what I have to come here today to do is talk about the Friends of Portsmouth Juvenile Courts and what they do, and a program that they've been spearheading for the last four years. The Friends of Portsmouth Juvenile Courts, what they do is they offer different programs to help at-risk kids and their families. And one of the key things we do is CASA Court Appointed Special Advocates, and what this program does is helps displaced kids get into foster homes and get the help they need. But what they also do is work with the parents to help improve their situation to possibly get their kids back. April is National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and for the last four years, we've been holding a pinwheel dedication ceremony. Mayor Wright was our inaugural guest speaker at, I can't, the Ambassador Club. And it's always a great event. We have a few board members here with pinwheels, and it's just a great event.
You have the pinwheels here?
We have one.
Okay, all right.
Typically, we've been behind the gun. We normally come after the event, so this year, we want to come before the event and invite the council members as well as the public to come out. This year, we'll be at the Intello Pavilion Park on April 6 at 3:00 PM. Child abuse is typically thought of as physical abuse. As I told you last year, a lot of kids are being verbally abused and beat down, and it becomes a generational thing where kids don't understand that their words are as hurtful and long-term as physical abuse. Some of the facts that we have today are every 85 minutes a child is abused, a child dies from child abuse or negligence every 12 days. In the city of Portsmouth, Child Protective Services receive 1,014 calls for a child in need, and it's up to us as a city, as citizens, to ensure that these kids have a safe way. A friend of mine through Facebook, which is hilarious, Deandre Barnes, he started the Portsmouth City Cowboy Sports. I mean, they do basketball, they do football, and I'm quite sure he'll expand further, but those are the type of things that we need to encourage along with friends. I spoke of CASA briefly, but they need volunteers. Right now, we have Melvina Sneed that is the coordinator of that, and she needs volunteers. She can't do it alone, and these volunteers work directly with the courts, social services, and the families to ensure that these kids have a fair shot at being productive citizens and giving back. So again, I invite you all to come out on April 6 at 3:00 PM at the Intello Pavilion. But I really would like to encourage you to become sponsors. We have three levels of sponsorship, Friend, Hero, and Champion. The Friend is a $100 donation. You get 10 pinwheels in wherever you go on. If you want to plant them somewhere, you have 10 pinwheels to plant at the dedication. You have the Hero sponsorship, which is $250, which will give you 50 pinwheels. And you have Champion, which is $500, which give you 100 pinwheels. Lastly, if you can't make those donations, you can go to FOPJC.org and make an in-kind donation to that organization. They can take everything that's needed, and we appreciate everything that you continuously do for that organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask, before you take your seat, and you're right, you guys have been doing a great job with that, and I noticed that, is it a competition you have between the high schools? I noticed out in front of Norcom every year, we see the pinwheels, and then I went out in Churchland, and do you compete them, or are the kids volunteering?
That's what they naturally do, and IC Norcom has been the spearhead. They've won, if it was a competition, they would have won the last couple of years, but it's not necessarily a competition. It's just something that makes our city look good, and if the more schools we have participating, the better we look as a city. And then the schools typically compete against one another. They do it on their own. It's not nothing that we encourage, but it helps the city look good.
Okay.
It'll look better if y'all are there. We had a few council members attend the ceremony, but we'd like to see the majority of you there.
Now, last year, you had the fellow from the Virginia Pilot to speak, and he did a real good job.
Yes, Ron Chastain.
Okay. And, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you do. Thank y'all for coming, and any wheels? You want to leave the wheels, or we need to buy them? What are the, if we're not a hero, or champ, or what else? A champion, yeah, Danny's definitely a champion, I'm sure you, but thank y'all very much. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Mr. Randy Bailey.
First, I'll start with my condolences to you all, Ms. White. Over the years in service, I've been unfortunate to lose several people under my commands, and it's not an easy thing to do. I remember each and every one of them, and it lasts with you for a while. You may not get over it soon, but in the years to come, the memories are things that you will cherish as you remember them, and sometimes it's things to look forward to, some of those memories. I'm here tonight because last meeting, when I was here, the mayor and I had a short discussion, and he reminded me that sometimes I get up here and stir the pot, and a gentleman got up here and made it sound as though I was racist. I am neither of those. The reason why I come to these meetings is because there are people in this city, and they total about 51 individuals. They range in age from 91 to 22. They are retired city workers, retired military, retired civil servants, business owners. They come to me, and they speak to me, and I'm their guinea pig. I come here and I express their remarks. And it's basically, I don't own property, so they feel that I don't have to fear retribution from the city. Because they do, and that's why they don't come to speak to you. That's unfortunate.
It is.
Now, there is one person that I do represent, and she is nine. She is a property owner in the city of Portsmouth. Three years ago, her father passed away from a heart attack. Four months ago, her mother passed away and left her with a piece of property in Portsmouth. There are several people who are helping her with the property, but when her father passed, it came to me to manage properties. There are two in Virginia Beach, one in Norfolk, one in Chesapeake, and this one in Portsmouth. And I have a very hard time marketing the Portsmouth property, simply because of what is the projected reality of this city. You go online, and people put down, oh, the highest crime in the world, the worst schools in the world, the worst traffic, the worst tunnels, the worst tolls. And when you go out and try and rent someplace, and people look this up online, you can't do business. When these people come to me and they say, oh, hey, look, this is wrong, that's wrong, and I come to you, this is where this comes from. It's not from me personally. And these people, they just ask that somewhere along the line, that you all get it together and try and work it. Today, the governor was in Norfolk, and he announced wind power. This city has some of the oldest waterfront, piers, buildings. There's no reason why y'all can't get together and get ahold of these wind people and say, look, run your boats out of here to go off of Virginia Beach and do your turbine work. Sell yourselves. Virginia Beach doesn't have pier area to run workboats. You do. I think you all understand where I'm coming from, because building apartment buildings and building Krogers and building, that is not going to broaden the tax base, that's not going to bring this place out of the dumper. And you don't want to end up as an unincorporated county and the city be disestablished, because it's looming. The more your tax base fails, you've got no place to go. Mr. Rowe knows this exponentially. When you run out of money, you're dead. And the other thing you cannot do, and all these people have asked me to reiterate this, is do not go back and undo the grand jury with the school board. You stop the thievery, don't go back to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Good night.
Ms. Donna Sya.
My name is Donna Sya, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty 13, a constitution should be structured to permanently protect the people from human frailties of their rulers. The purpose of our city charter and Virginia constitution is to define the area in which a public official can serve to his utmost ability, but at the same time provide strict limitations to chain him down from mischief. To chain down our public officials, our government is separated into three branches, legislative, executive, and judicial. Our city legislators have been granted powers that are explicitly granted and those that are reasonably inferred. Our legislators also have the power to take other official actions not in conflict with the Constitution of Virginia or other laws of Virginia for the preservation of the safety, health, peace, good order, comfort, convenience, morals, and welfare of its citizens. How can our legislators preserve the safety, health, peace, good order, comfort, convenience, morals, and welfare of her people with the conflicts that are continuing to arise in our work sessions and in our city council's public hearings? We, the good people of Portsmouth, are witnessing conflicts arising from some members of our legislative branch of government and some members of our executive branch of government. With these conflicts, we are seeing the intense personal animosity expanding. The fact that conflict exists is not necessarily a bad thing, as long as it is resolved effectively. It can lead to personal and professional growth. In many cases, effective conflict resolution can make the difference between positive and negative outcomes. By resolving conflict successfully, we can solve many of the problems that are brought to the surface, as well as receiving benefits such as increased understanding and group cohesion, as well as improved self-knowledge. However, if conflict is not handled effectively, the results can be damaging. Conflicting goals can quickly turn into personal dislike, teamwork breaks down, and talents are wasted as people disengage from their work, and it is easy to end up in a vicious downward spiral of negativity and recrimination. If we are to keep our city working effectively, we need to stop this downward spiral as soon as we can. To do this, all we need is to understand the conflict cycle theory that lies behind effective conflict resolution. Unless the conflict cycle is interrupted, the cycle will continue to expand in intensity and scope. The following is an example of how a student was in a conflict cycle, and the school, the counselors, and I helped the student get out of his downward spiral of negativity. As an intern counselor in the Bucksmore Academy of the Community Services Foundation, I was assigned to a student who had been just transferred from Liberty High School because of his disruptive behavior. This assignment was a requirement for my degree. My role was to help the student discover some of his positive personality characteristics, and what animal he thought embodied these characteristics. He said that the lion embodied the characteristics that he saw within himself. They were symbolic of a leader. These six characteristics were protectiveness, courage, willing to fight for what he believes in, willingness to explore what makes him happy, and staying positive whether in a group or alone. He goes on to say, as a leader, he is responsible by working, by being dependable, and keeping his word. As a leader, he will communicate directly using our messages and affirming statements and slapping his follower's hand and saying, "Good job." He was presented with his certification of a leadership on June 3, 2011, along with his own personal set of dog tags. In closing, we can disrupt this conflict cycle if we want to.
Mr. Lorenzo Waters.
Honorable Mayor Wright, council members, and staff, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Lorenzo Waters. I reside in the Kevlar Manor section of Portsmouth. This is my first time speaking at a city council meeting. I've never been to a city council meeting until this year. As a matter of fact, this is my third time at a council meeting. I have seen the meetings on Cox Cable, Channel 48, and I mostly tuned into it the latter part of last year. I think this was during when the students was coming up, speaking on the STEM program that they had at the schools. And the first thing I would like to say, when the council fund our schools, you're not only funding our schools, but you're investing in our children. And there are four items that I would like to speak on. As I was watching the work sessions and the meetings on TV on Cox Cable 48, there were some things that caught my attention. That's the reason that I'm here now, because I think they are very important, and I think that there are issues that the city council needs to be addressing. The first is diversity. Mayor Wright, if I'm not mistaken, on March 10, I think you spoke that the Hampton Roads area had a out migration for the last three years.
Yes, sir.
And this is a very serious issue that need to be addressed. The second one was already spoke of earlier, and that was the update of the disparity Another issue that caught my attention was the status of the segregated data of the Fire and Police Department. Another issue was the living wage. I heard a lady speak on March 10, saying that council could do something concerning the living wage, and I was wondering if this is an issue that the council will be addressing. The next item that I would like to speak of is minority contracting. Just by watching the work sessions and the two meetings that I have attended prior, which was March 3 and March 10, these are four items that have caught my attention. And I'm pretty sure the same way it caught my attention when I was just sent home, watching the meetings on TV, and it caught my attention, I'm pretty sure that those who are watching and will be watching, it will catch theirs, too. But the people that are hearing this, your voice need to be heard, because these are serious issues that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down, and thank you for finally coming up to speak. Let me just share, I agree with everything you said there, and I think we as a region and we as a city need to deal with all of those issues there that you mentioned, and I believe that has a lot to do with this net loss of people to our region because of those types of things, and also within that net loss of those types of things, and also within that net loss of not just people leaving, a lot of our younger kids are not coming back, that are going out to college, and they've phrased that, the brain drain of Hampton Roads. And so, all of those things are serious, and they're issues that we tend to ignore or not talk about until we're forced to. And then when we're forced to talk about all of those things, we just, we're all in a different position, and we're not prepared to handle that, and then we fumble that football, and it just looks worse and worse and worse. And so, we need help, we need help as a region, and we need help as a city to be able to understand when you're being questioned, that that's good. I mean, I spoke the other night at the PCR, Mr. Wright and them asked me to give some words, and I talked about our police and fire and how proud I am of them, but I've been very disturbed when I see this negative connotation that's being presented, when someone asks questions. And you should never be afraid to be able to explain to someone or tell them why you do what you do. And if you're in a position to let them know that you don't have the answers, and we're willing to evolve, if it means getting help, or if it means, whatever it means, we don't have the answers to a lot of these things, but you have to start talking about them. You gotta start working on them. So I guess you've been sitting home, and you just had to come out here, and it took you two meetings to come up here. I think I saw you at the last meeting, sitting over there.
Yes, sir.
So thank you for coming, I appreciate your comments, and you're correct, these are issues that we need to talk about. And thank you for quoting me correctly as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Good night. Yeah, that never happens.
I never get quoted correctly, right?
Our final speaker is Mr. Ty Muttlow.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Board. My name is Ty Muttlow. I live in Park Manor now. I am no longer renting, I bought. Last time I left you all, I went to the beach. I'm back. I am glad to see that you guys are trying to improve the city. Unfortunately, it seems to be the cost of our neighborhoods. There is no reason that our neighborhoods should be underwater on the little bit of rain that we got this last Friday. I've contacted engineering, I've contacted Public Works. Our neighborhoods have been neglected, but it cannot be at the cost of bringing people in that are part-time, coming here to work and then leave. Our infrastructure within this city needs to be corrected. I'm being told by departments, we don't have enough people to work, we don't have enough money. We need to find a way to fix that. Our schools, I know that you guys got hammered along with the school board, and rightfully so. A bunch of adults that could not act correctly together based upon leadership. We have a new school board superintendent. I've had multiple meetings since I've been back since February. He needs a fair shot. The school board funding, fund him. Do not let him go through this with one arm tied behind his back. You have new school board members that are asking the tough questions, but we need help from both of you all. We need all the adults on these panels to do for the kids, not for their own agenda. This coming weekend, Saturday, is a STEM day at Wilson High School. I would want you guys to come out and see what these kids that are going to be your next college graduates, show you what they can do. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bracy will be there on Saturday. It would be an honor for these kids to watch you and him interact together with these children and the teachers, to show that there is some type of unity between the two boards. And I just released, if you can just please give them the funding of what they asked for. Give this man a chance. Let him try to clean up what has been a problem over the last few years. Other than that, that's all I have to say, and I'm really glad that my son is back doing robotics at Norcom. I'm sorry I got to miss some of you at the robotics at Norcom this last time. You missed a really good show. My son qualified Wilson for states.
Very good.
So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Let me just share with you, thank you for coming up, thank you for coming back to Portsmouth. The grass isn't always greener. The STEM program, I go to that every year. I haven't missed a one. I take my kids, and we go to every event at Wilson High School, and it's laid out, and everything's displayed, and every year, we get together and talk about what display we thought was the most exciting. And it is a huge deal when we talk about science and technology and engineering and mathematics, and they do a grand job of displaying that, and the kids coming out. I'll also be speaking, I believe it's Thursday night, to the Air and Space Museum, to several hundred high school kids about STEM, engineering, math, and sciences for the Chrome Club. They're having a huge annual event there. This is huge, not only in Portsmouth, but within our region, but programs like that, you're correct, need to be funded, and we need to make sure we magnify those things and do whatever we can to a child at a very young age to get them to learn mathematics. I spoke the other night to Teacher of the Year, I can't remember the young man's name, but he was Woodrow Wilson High School's science teacher. And they talked about why he was selected as the Teacher of the Year, and he takes a lot of modern-day culture, pop, rap, and everything else he can that he noted interests his kids, and he translates that into his lesson plan when he's dealing with the sciences. And it's amazing the results that he's getting out of his science classes with those kids. And to watch the video, and to listen to him talk, and listen to all the other teachers talk at Wilson, and all of them talk about how he does that, it just speaks to, we need to be more innovative when it comes to not just funding things, but doing the things to get our kids interested. So I'm glad your son's in the robotics program. That is a renowned program. We've, the robotics program there, we've been to Anaheim, California for the world competition, Wilson, Churchland, and Norcom on different occasions over the last three or four years, and I think one year, we had about three teams that competed, not a national, this is a world competition, and we had about three teams from Portsmouth and Anaheim, California. So thank you for highlighting that, and good luck with your son. All right, thank you.
And don't forget to welcome Ms. Cherry.
And, okay, Madam Clerk, is that it? All right, before we adjourn, I see Councilman Cherry, the beautiful Yvette Cherry, is here. Would you please stand, ma'am? I didn't recognize you, I thought it was his daughter out there, and it's good to see you, and God bless everyone. Good night.
Yeah.